And you may want to take a couple of minutes to do it, is with only three of us on the podium today, and I usually ask this even if we only have four members instead of five. It requires a three-person vote to overturn the zoning administrator. So that means with only three of us, it has to be unanimous. And I usually give the appellant the opportunity to decide not to appear today and take a chance when we have four or five members. You can chat about it, I'm going to reintroduce it in a minute, but I just want you to know you have that opportunity. So this is the best Vegas odds you're going to get today. Okay, so just introducing that and coming back to it. So let's go back now to the old business in the variance case, which was PVAR 2008-014. This had been continued from April 15th, 2009. It's 120 East Cypress Street. The appellant was Brian Chan. And Mr. Duong, you were going to make findings for us to consider today, I believe.
Good evening Chairman Kane and Commissioners. That's correct. This case was deliberated by the Planning Commission at the last meeting of April 15th, and the Planning Commission directed staff to return with alternative findings to reverse the zoning administrator's decisions and approved standard variance case number PVAR 2008-014 located at 120 East Cypress Street. The alternative findings were included in your packet for today's meeting. I'm not sure whether the Commissions would like me to go over each one, and...
I think you probably need to for record. Is that correct?
They're in the record.
They are in the record then?
I'm finding we just make the motion.
All right. Have each of the Commissioners read the proposed motion? Are there comments, corrections, observations you want to make on it?
Actually, it wasn't motion made, and then seconded last time, we just needed the...
It was for the findings?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think someone needs to move these findings and second them.
I move to accept the findings.
All right. Mr. Berman, can you second that, please?
I second it.
All right, I have a motion and second. Now, Mr. Berman, did you watch the tape of that meeting?
No, I did not.
Okay, do we...
Yeah, you would need someone who actually ended up participating in the hearing.
Do we need, can we vote two to zero with an, or two, can we vote two to zero with one abstention if I second it? Or do we need three votes?
No, you can go ahead, you can go ahead and pass the gavel.
Okay, I'm going to pass the gavel to you. I'll second the motion.
Right.
May I have the gavel back? Thank you. I guess we're adjourned. You feel the power of that, don't you? All right, so now we have a motion and a second. Could you call the roll?
Commissioner Berman, Commissioner Lee...
Yes? I'm sorry, it was on the motion.
Commissioner Kay.
Please stop again. He answered here. On this motion, you're going to need to abstain because you were present. Okay. Now, please continue again.
Commissioner Lee, yes. And Chairperson Kay?
Aye, and a vote of two to zero with one abstention. The findings were approved for PVAR 2008-014, 120 East Cypress Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Okay, so the next agenda item is under new business, it's conditional use permit case PCUP 2008-047. It's at 1841 Tamerlane Drive. The appellant is Greg Holford. The applicant is represented by Shogi Yupremian. And it is to reverse the approval of a conditional use permit to allow the construction of a new 2,980 square foot, two-story, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage on a lot that is 65 feet wide located in the R1R restricted residential zone described as Lot 9, tract number 13891. The applicant proposed a conditional use permit to allow the construction of a new single-family residence on a lot that is 65 feet in width. Code requires approval of a conditional use permit for anything under less than, or for anything less than 80 feet in width. It's exempt from environmental, and staffs represented by Roger Kiesel.
Shall I proceed with the presentation?
Let's just, for just a second, you do want to proceed?
Yeah, just clarify.
If you're, we're going out of order, but you need to come to the mic so that people can hear it.
I am the appellant, I'm Greg Holford. I just want to clarify, to have this overturned, we need to have three of the three of you vote for us?
That's correct.
Okay, it's been determined that we will wait until we have more of your...
More of us.
...group here, yes.
I don't know that you have more of you.
And I feel bad because so many, so many people have come, and some people gave up work to be able to do this, but still, it seems only fair to the group that we get to present to everyone, or at least don't have to get, I mean, I love craps in Vegas, actually, but this, three out of three, it seems a little, a little tough. I don't think it's, it's quite fair to the presentation, and we will pass.
Well, and I appreciate it, and that's why I usually give people that opportunity, regardless of the case.
That's great.
So within our discretion, and assuming that my, my partners in crime, if you will, my fellow Commissioners, agree, I think we'll want to continue this to a date certain. So far, so good in terms of order, Mr. Garcia?
That's right, and without further public notice.
And without public notice, but what would be a date that we have some time available?
July 1st is the date right now, there's nothing else scheduled on that day. That would be the first Planning Commission meeting in July.
Say.
Just, Commissioners, so you're aware of what your calendar is.
Mm-hmm.
On the 20th, you have an appeal at Cascadia. We also have another event that evening, so we've been asked not to add, add any other cases on that evening.
I'm sorry, on May 20th?
That would be May 20th, your next meeting.
When you say you have an event, is that something that's going to be on TV6 that we're precluded from running along, or something?
No, there's another event, there's a retirement, and everybody in the city's...
Hey, I mean, you know, this is open government, you can be honest about what's going on.
There's no staff.
I'm sorry?
Staff.
Oh, certainly.
Madeleine Blake, the Director of Community Development and Housing, is retiring after about 30 years, and at that night, there is a retirement event in the evening, and many people in the city would like to...
Well, let's follow up on two points on that. What time does that start? At 6:00?
6:00 PM.
Well, you really don't want us to run along that night. Were you going to ask us earlier or later in the evening to start at 4:00, or what? Had you thought of that, or?
No, there's only one item on, and it was actually continued at an earlier date.
Okay.
So we were still going to start the meeting at 5:00, because we already had a continued item.
Well, let me ask this, in the interest not only of all the people that were here, but also in the interest of the applicant, who, you know, has gotten a go-ahead and is being held, I think everybody, in the interest of everyone's sense of fair play, we'd like to try to do it sooner. My question is, could my fellow Commissioners meet at 4:00 PM? Or?
I was just going to say, you know, on that date, you know, even if you moved it up an hour, I'm not sure that's enough time. Another suggestion you could, you could continue to another date that's not a regular meeting date, just have a special...
Yeah, maybe that might be better.
Okay, I'd be willing to consider that as well.
If we were going to do a special meeting, we would need to call GTV6 to make sure that we're not conflicting with any other meetings that night.
Okay, well, a couple paths here then. First off, beyond May 20th, what's our first meeting in June look like?
On June 3rd, you have a parcel map at 1770 Golf Club Drive. It's a three-lot map, and you also have a solar panel code amendment, it's a zoning code amendment. So there are two items on that evening.
That doesn't seem particularly long, and/or we could look at a 4 o'clock start.
That's true. And then also on the 17th, that would be the following meeting, you have an appeal for Montrose Collection, and we're anticipating that that will be quite a long appeal.
I suspect that might be lively.
And so that's why we would favor July 1st, simply because that meeting right now is open. We have nothing scheduled for that date.
Gentlemen, what are your feelings? Mr. Chester Lee?
So if we could start, let's say, June 3rd or something like that, we'll be just coming here at 4 o'clock to start?
Well, they were saying on June 3rd that that might be a little problematic, because I figure why they said we couldn't start early on the 3rd.
They would say that was a late schedule on the 3rd.
No, well, now they need...
So are we just adding one hour to the, sorry, is it a bit 4:00 to 7:00, something like that?
If you're looking at June 3rd, I mean, we're estimating the parcel map will probably take about an hour, and the solar panel code amendment, that's probably anywhere from half an hour to an hour at the most.
So...
So you're looking at it roughly at two and a half hour meeting at the outside. You'd wanted to add this to it.
With those two issues.
Right, with those two issues. So if you wanted to add it to that night...
By May, the solar panel discussion could become also a lively discussion.
Mm-hmm, yes, I could imagine.
That's right. So, and, and it may come off, but, so with all those uncertainties, you might...
You might want, you turned off right at the end of that.
With all those uncertainties, if you want to consider that night. That is why we recommend that the first meeting in July, because that's the one that we're most certain of not becoming a, an extended...
Well, what do we think about maybe 4:00 PM on the 3rd?
How about this extra day on, like, 27th, the next week?
And do a spec, well, I think the, we'd have to do notification.
Yeah, they'd have to read notice only because, because the fact that we don't, with GTV6, they don't know when, when times will be available, so in essence, they'd have to check, and we wouldn't be able to tell the folks here tonight when that hearing's going to take place.
Well, but we could conce, if we, well, we couldn't do it before the 3rd, we could conceivably schedule the 3rd and find out before then, oh, the 10th is available, or whatever, but, but we're moving a lot of people's schedules around. So for that reason, I think we need to look at maybe considering the 3rd as being a longer meeting, which means we either run late, or start early and still run late.
Mm-hmm.
And the other thing is, if we try to schedule something special for next week, I, I don't know what our fellow Commissioners' times are.
Next week?
Yeah, you know, just, just too quick, neither one of us know what Mr. Sheets or Mr. Torgerson's schedules. Mr. Berman, would you be able to start at 4:00 PM on the 3rd?
No.
You think so? Okay.
Right in.
Does that work okay for you, Mr. Lee?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Laura just reminded me that on June the 3rd, there's also a North Glendale Community Plan meeting, and we, we know in the past, many members of the community, including some members of the Planning Commission, have been interested in attending those, so we just, that's another reason to perhaps consider ending the meeting at a particular time that night.
And what time does that meeting start?
6:00, 6 to 8.
6:00. Well, we're, we're not going to make it...
I'm sorry, that was, that's, that meeting will be 7 to 9:00.
Well, there's a chance of making it, it started at 7:00, but there'd be no way we could make it if we, if it started at 6:00, because we'll still be here at that time.
I mean, it sounds like, I mean, all the, all the, you know, the times are not working out. If you, for right now, tend to live at, you know, the July meeting, but if you maybe make some contacts and see if, you know, May 27th is available, then we make notification and then...
Well, I'm sorry, but the 17th was still a possibility as well, correct?
That's next week.
Seven, the 17th of June?
Of June.
That was the Montrose Appeal.
Appeal.
Right, so we could have two lively...
Yes, you could.
Be patient, there's a lot of things to consider.
You want me to call GTV6, I'll see if, what they have on their calendar, if you want me to see if the 27th.
That's going to be difficult for a couple of the Commissioners, I'm sure, as well. And we don't know at this time what Mr. Sheets or Mr. Torgerson's time would be for the 27th, anyway.
That's correct.
It's all by gosh and by golly.
Is it warm in here?
It is warm in here. I mean, I think, I'm, I don't think it's just me. All right. You want to go for the 17th? Have a couple lively things?
Yeah.
All right, we'll schedule it for the 17th. And if I would ask you to sit down for just a moment, Ms. Yupremian, let's weigh in with you, too.
June 17th. Yes, Mr. Chair, good afternoon, Shogi Yupremian, Yupremian Consulting, the applicant on the project. We are ready to go through the hearing today. I do believe that you do have a quorum to hold a hearing, but the decision is up to you. I have to check with my client and the architect to see if the date would be available for June 17th.
Well, that's what I'm asking you to do, is let's find out if your, your people are available for the 17th.
Right, and, and can we be sure we have a five-member?
What's going to happen on the 17th is, and I'll make this a point, is we don't know if we'll have three people, four people, or five people on that date, but we'll continue to that point, and I'm usually only good on that count, in terms of my discretion, just once. You know, that, that, this was just an unfortunate situation. Normally, our other Commissioners are very, you know, very good at attending, but they had conflicts. So I would be prepared on the 17th, at least from my perspective, to continue, whether it's three people, four people, or five. We need at least three.
Yeah, correct.
But would you double-check and make sure that your clients have that availability?
So June 17th, 5 o'clock?
I think we, do we want to make it 4 o'clock?
I'm open, yeah.
I think we'd probably, I think we'll probably lean toward 4 o'clock on the 17th. And yours would be the first business. And again, part of this, in terms of that, is otherwise, we're looking at July. And frankly, the appellant's going to be happy the longer it goes, you folks would probably like a decision to know whether you can move forward or not.
Okay, that's correct.
So we're trying to be responsive to you as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
So 17th is okay? All right, well, then, then at some point before we adjourn, I think we want to shoot for 4 o'clock as far as a meeting start, but for this one, we just need to do dates certain, correct?
You need to do date and time certain.
Oh.
I mean, we typically, since you continue to the regular meeting, you, but you're, since you're suggesting going to 4:00, that'd have to be a special meeting, so if you want to go to 4:00, you'd have to continue to 4:00, a special meeting at 4:00 on June 17th.
Okay. Well, I think that's the motion we'll go in. Now, I'm seeing hands getting raised, okay? And I don't know what people really need to have to add to this conversation, but if somebody that's turned in a card feels really strongly that they need to talk about the fact that we're going to continue this until June 17th at 4:00 PM, please step forward and identify yourself. Otherwise, that's what we're going to move on, and we're going to continue the matter till then. I mean, I've seen people waving, you know, raising hands and, you know...
We just had one...
If you're going to ask it, please, that's all, we just need to do this procedurally.
Okay.
Simple question or not, we need to have you in the mic.
Well, it's a very, very simple question. When we come back on the 17th, what happens if there's only three of you again?
We'll probably move forward with the hearing.
Okay.
I mean, and I'm sorry, sir, just for the record, your name?
Oh, Sam Bryant.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bryant. And that's not certain, you know, because that's going to be on the 17th, but the way...
Well, it'd seem like if we have only three, then you have to get all three to either agree or disagree.
That is the facts. And the condition today was, we gave you guys, given the, the situation, at our discretion, we said, we're willing to continue this to hopefully get more. So we're going to continue it at least one time. I can't tell you for sure what's going to happen on the 17th.
Could possibly continue again until we get at least the five?
It's possible. I'm only one vote, but I make it clear that my intention would probably be to move forward. I may change my mind between now and then, but, you know, but it's a rare event when we only have three people. I've been on this board four years now, and that's never happened. We've had four a number of times, but never three.
Okay.
All right, all right, and again, just give us your name.
Hi, my name is Nancy Klein. Is it possible to ask the other Commissioners if they're available on that date, and then set the date for the hearing, rather than setting the date?
Well, no, we know what we can do, however, and that's a very good idea, is what we can do is, we have to set it today with our motion, but in the meantime, staff can survey the Commissioners, and absent emergency or illness, find out whether they expect to be available.
And then if they can't, then we could change the date.
I, that's a reasonable thing that we can work on.
Okay, great, thank you.
And at that point, we might even consider a special meeting.
Can I just tell you at this point, I haven't heard any information from any Commissioners that said that they would not be here that day.
Okay.
So, want to make a move?
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm going to move on toward a motion, just making sure all, all parts of the, of the issue, all the people that wanted to speak have been heard, and then we're going to have this motion. I see nothing else, so please.
Wait, there was...
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you, sir.
My name is Miko Iwasian, I'm a resident of the same street neighbor, and I need to disclose my position with the city, I'm a consultant to the city, but the reason of raising my hand was, I was wondering if it was possible to be notified, like, this meeting, that we were notified, mailing that the meeting was going to be held today, other than working out dates.
Right, 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 we have speaker cards, and most of you have your addresses on them, I'm just checking to see who might not. Ms. Stanley, no, Ms. Stanley has, never mind. And you do. Everyone's name is on here. I believe it's probably fair and appropriate for staff to notify these people of the, that the date is set in stone, for example, is that correct? And quite doable, Mr. Hossini?
We could do that.
Hagenian, rather? All right?
Okay.
All right, could we have a motion, please?
Yes, I move to, to hear the CUP case number PCUP 2008-047 for a special meeting on June 17th at 4 o'clock.
Your motion, support call roll, please.
Commissioner Berman?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Chairperson Kay?
Aye, and a vote of three to zero, the conditional use permit case PCUP 2008-047 is continued to 4:00 PM on June 17th, we said?
June 17th. June 17th. I just want to confirm that, so without further notice, with the exception of the speakers.
Without further notice, thank you very much for pointing that out. All right, so that part's done. Folks, I'm sorry you had to come here today, but I think, you know, it's probably the best decision for all involved. All right? Nice seeing you. And I have to say, our agenda got a lot lighter than I thought it was going to be.
This is the first time we've been getting out of here.
You know, if the Dodgers have a home streak winning, we may continue it on the 17th, so...
One more, the record is broken.
You're welcome.
We're moving up closer, closer to your part of the agenda.
She got it.
Give me one, I don't know.
Oh, we're still in session, by the way.
Yep. What do you need now?
I was going to put the PowerPoint back on.
Oh, it's probably good.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to take it.
I'm done, too.
No worries.
That was fast.
Oh, jeez.
Oh, okay, oh, you're, you're...
All right, folks, we're not in recess, so if you could keep your voices down, because we're going to keep moving on. Next agenda item is number seven, comprehensive planning. There's no new business, there's no old business. Is there anything that wants to be stated under item seven? Comprehensive planning. It's kind of a new one for me.
Well, we, let me get my notes. Okay, we have, just to let you know that there was an appeal filed for Rebel Cafe, and that was one that you considered a couple of weeks ago, that's at 1022 East Chevy Chase, that was a request for alcohol permit, and that the ZIA denied it. Right, the ZIA denied it, then you also denied it, and that has been appealed to counsel. Date has not been set yet for counsel. And then there's also a flyer that we were requested to pass out, too. This is Women at the Table, How to Get Appointed to a Citizen Board of Commission. And this is a meeting that's open to the public, and you're invited to. It's on June 1st from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Alex Theater. And then the other meeting we have is, we have two meetings that we're scheduling for the North Glendale Community Plan. This is a report back to the community. We've had outreach that has been going on since, since January this year, and we're going to have two identical meetings. They're going to be held from 6:00 to 9:00 PM on January, or on July, June 1st and June 3rd. They're both going to be at Clark Magnet School, and again, it's going to be a workshop, more a, more of an open house format. We'll have planners there to answer questions, and all the public is invited to attend those. I mean, I think that'll be particularly of interest to those who have already participated in some of our earlier workshops, because they'll be able to check and make sure that everything we heard from them has been accurately recorded.
All right. How has the outreach gone? How would you consider the participation levels?
I think it's been really successful with residents. We've had a lot of success getting them out. We have been meeting with all the schools, so I believe we've met with every single school that's up there, or at least we've sent them notices, they've had an opportunity to attend. We have been able to meet with the Chambers of Commerce, for the CV Chamber of Commerce, and have also met with the Spar Heights Business Association. Prior years, we've met with the Montrose Verdugo City Association, or actually, Chamber of Commerce, and this time, they did not indicate an interest in meeting with us this time, however, we have invited them, and all the businesses and property, commercial property owners up there, to a meeting that was scheduled on May 18th, that would be Monday, and that's going to be at the Spar Heights Community Building, and that's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And so that is one that we, we have a mailer out right now, where people can get further information on the city's website. But that's our, our, another chance for businesses to, to speak with us also. And again, we, we're always welcome to, to hear from other businesses. We do meet with anybody who requests individually, if you have community groups, we've met with churches, we're meeting with local organizations. So as they call us, we're happy to meet with them if they're interested.
Okay.
That's update on that.
All right. Well, it, and just jumping ahead, how does item seven, comprehensive planning, differ from item nine, planning department updates?
I don't think it differs at all.
Okay. Item seven's just a new one, and I just wondered if there was a new thought process going on in terms of what you were going to share with us. Okay, well, then, I'm very anxious to hear about item 8A, which is new business, and Mr. Lee would like to chat with us about the green energy technology corridor.
Should I move over there, or should I do it from here, and you click it for me?
Let me try to find your PowerPoint, and then...
Does he need to step down from the table?
No, no, it's fine.
He can sit from the dials, okay. Where would you like to, then?
So I'll just say next.
This is a...
Let me help you with that.
Yeah, this is that other disk we put in for the last item, and since it's not one of our normal ones, I'm not able to get out, can't get out of this thing.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay.
It's frozen.
We need to get Jeff. Yeah, it's not responding at all, unless, maybe there's something. I'm okay, but how do I get out of it, though? It should be at end. No, it just...
You restart.
If I restart, I can't get back, and it's in the network.
Oh, really?
I can't get the picture off. We had a disk that somebody put in for another item with photos, and it's not one that we normally, it's not a program we normally use, and so now, we're in this problem where it's frozen, and I don't want to turn it off, because I don't think we can reboot. The only person I think who can reboot is Jeff. I mean, normally I would hit.
Try Ctrl, Alt, Delete, and at least just shut down the program. It won't shut down the computer, just the program. Which exhausts my computer knowledge.
That's what we want, the Microsoft, the PowerPoint. This is running, but the other one's locking it.
So we do have a CD in there?
No, there's no CD. There's a, it's a disk, or a thumb drive. The CD was in there, we took the, there's no CD in there now. It's empty.
But it thinks there is.
Yeah, it thinks there is.
Okay. Oh, there we go.
Oh, yeah.
Now it just disappeared.
Okay.
Thank. Just came back.
Yeah, there's nothing in Drive D. Unless we try pulling out, we could try pulling out that. We could try pulling out the presentation.
Yeah, why don't you?
And then redo that whole thing.
Yeah, it's stuck in some internal feedback loop.
It's a program. You think if we turn the Smartboard off, it might work better? Do you think that's related to that?
Technology.
It was a virus.
Saves time and energy, right?
I can't pull it out, because.
I think that's an excellent idea. We'll go to recess.
I pulled out his presentation. But now there's nothing. I guess we can hit Ctrl, Alt, Delete again.
So what is the worry of shutting this down?
Because I can't.
Okay, we're back in session. It's a continuation of the May 6th regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission. And we're at Agenda item 8A, which is the presentation on the green energy corridor. Mr. Lee?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I had opportunity to, when I visited Korea, to see a lot of the technologies in the IT area and also green energy technology. So I wanted to share that with our fellow commissioners and also our planning staff. So here it goes. Let's look at the screen. And I, the purpose of this presentation is to propose an area in Glendale to lure some companies of a high-tech technology background in the areas of IT and green energy. And the contents of the presentation, I'll be talking about renewable energy, which is green energy, the conventional wisdom that we know of, and then innovative ideas that I saw, internet media poll, RFID application, and energy efficiency, which deals with LED lighting, inter extra and energy efficient transformers, and future technology, which consists of a smart dust, and organic LEDs, and plastic solar panels, I mean solar cells. Green energy, that, some background, why we're talking about green energy, is that there are some really opportunities that's here in the States. The International Energy Agency predicts that $20 trillion will be invested into alternative energy projects over the next 22 years. And the new investments into the sector increased by 60% from 2006 to 2007, which is around $148 billion dollars. And private investments increased from $2.7 billion to $7.1 billion in 2006. These are the data that's available in 2006. I'm pretty sure that, you know, in 2009, these numbers are a lot bigger now. And the part of the new stimulus plan by President Obama, he wants to double the alternative energy production in the next three years. Green energy category, as, you know, everybody knows that there's a solar, wind, biofuel, and also the energy efficiency falls into green energy sector, and smart power distribution using digital technology to save energy. And they're predicting in 2009 that smart grid companies may represent the fastest growing sector, and there are some innovative solutions. This is one of the universal solution that I saw. This is not something conceptual, this is actually there. And what that is, is that, apologize for some of the Koreans, I couldn't fix that, but you can see some of the English there, it says waste energy. Yeah, all the cars are operated by, you know, gasoline fuels, fossil fuels, and, you know, it's all waste energy that's on the road. What you do is that, that energy, you convert that over to the storage energy into the batteries, and then you convert that onto AC. And next slide, please.
I'm sorry, could you go back to it? So what are we looking at there?
These are, these are pads.
Panels compress and...
Right, and then it generates electricity as you, the tire presses down on those pads. So if you look at the next slide, it talks about it a little bit there. The rolling electric generator V system there, the potential electricity generated from this is that if you put this pads of 100 pads over 60 feet long, in terms of, let's say, mall or something like that, assuming that there's 15 cars per day, I think there are a lot more cars going into the malls, you get about 833 kilowatt per day, and that's about 300 megawatt per year. And the cost of installing this 100 pads is about $400,000 approximately. And that's about one-tenth of the solar panel cost to generate that 300 megawatt. So it is, it is very cheap solution. And where you can have this is like, like I said, in terms of the mall area, or Americana or Galleria, and it could be used as a speed bumps. So people will go into the malls, slow down, yet now, you know, you got free energy, which you can light up straight lights and whatever, some of the mall electricity that you need.
I have questions on this. I'm really interested. So the 1,500 cars a day, and you have upfront cost or first cost of 400,000, which you're saying that the solar would have been about 4 million to generate that much?
Right.
Okay. And so the first cost is 400,000. How long does that system last? Do they know?
Yeah, so I guess, you know, if the department is interested, and maybe some, maybe either GWP or Polyworks, then, you know, there is a company that who can, you know, I gather this information.
You're not an expert.
I'm not, I'm not an expert. I'm just interested party that, you know, who wants to look at this, you know, high technology.
I understand. It's very interesting.
And propose a area, yes, okay, next, please. And the other thing that I saw, and it was the media polls, internet media polls, and what they did is that they installed about 22 of these things along the street, and it created the impressive landmark. You know, it was a just street before, but having this media polls, you know, now, you know, it became iconic, you know, landmark.
Like the pylons at LAX.
Right. So, and then, you know, it became an interactive system, space for young people, or, and also other old people to go there, actually find out, you know, what's available in Glendale, you know, you know, what, I guess, you know, what district is available, what restaurants are available, and so on. All that could be, you know, you could find that in the, in the media poll. You know, IT, you know, high-technology IT, you know, system was there. Also, there's a security camera that you can use this as a, also a security system as well. And, you know, it turned into an art museum on street because it's LED lighting, so you can do whatever color you want, you know, and whatever the graphic you want to put on there. So, next, please. That's what it looks like, the internet media polls in Gangnam Seoul. Next, please. This is during the daytime. Next. This is during the nighttime. And, next, please. Yeah, this, this is the base of these 40-foot tall, if you look at the height, it's 40-foot, width is about 4'8", and depth is about 2'2". It's user-friendly, wireless accessible, so, you know, people can just use this, you know, their notebooks are on this, this pole. It's got CCTV security cameras on it, it's interactive, so it has internet webcam, it's got some games, and, you know, it's got directory. Also, there's some newspapers, you can put Glendale Press on this thing, obviously because it's got internet. The media art, you know, you can program whatever you want to do, and digital art. Next, please. Okay. That did not transfer. So that video was supposed to go with that. So, next, please. Yeah, because if we have time, maybe we can come back to that video.
Alan.
I'm thinking we may be here for a few minutes.
We may be here a while. Let's see if it goes back.
Oh, there it goes. Okay. Oh, we've got the video, okay. Well, it's supposed to be a, it's supposed to be a video, something, okay.
I think I skipped it.
Yeah, okay. So maybe, maybe we'll get it from the, my USB. But it really is a nice video, but we'll come back to it. Now, the next item that, that we need to look at is RFID, which is radio frequency identification. A lot of people without really understanding knows that, you know, it's already here in our lives. This could replace the barcode system, and some of the application that Walmart has already mandatorily instructed their suppliers to go to this RFID system for their inventory control and consumer uses. This RFID tags are now becoming very cheap, you know, like four, five cents, so you can actually put on the, on the packaging. Libraries, you could put this on the books, all they have to do is, the people that was walking out the books, the readers will just automatically check these things out, and you don't have to really, you know, go through the checkout system. Markets, what you do is that you put the goods in the, in your basket, as you walk through this RFID reader, it, you know, reads all the items that's in the basket, and then also calculates the total for you. And if you have automatically a pay system, you know, set up, then all you need to do is just push your card all the way to the car, and then, you know, do all the calculation for you, and then, you know, deduct the amount from your bank account. Security, this is where, you know, you go in the, like, Nestle building or other buildings where you pass through, and then you swipe your card. This is RFID, so you probably, you know, didn't know that before. Mall card, this is where, like Americana, you'll go to this little kiosk, and then you'll make this little card, RFID card with your name, and it's really useful. So, you know, you put maybe name and some basic information in there, and then you'll go to the stores. And then, as you, since you walk in the store, they say, welcome, Mr. Kane, and then you'll have all the records of his visit. You might not have to buy anything, but then they'll have the record how many times you came into the store, and then they'll have also record of what you bought last time. So if you bought so many pants, they'll say, ah, you know, last time you bought this and this and this.
Looks like you've lost weight, Mr. Kane.
So, so you don't have all those records. And that's what this RFID cards will do. So, you know, it'll be, it'll be a really good gadget. The parking, you know, normally these days you go, like, you got how many spaces available in certain parking levels, it'll tell you what spot to go to. And fitness monitoring, and this was something that I was very much interested, and that was in the parks, where you go do sit-ups, pull-ups and all that, it has a monitor, you know, if you wear RFID card, and that you want to do, let's say, 50 sit-ups, and 50, you know, push-ups and things like that, and it counts how many push-ups you did. At the end, at the end of the exercise, you come and you enter your data, I mean, you, you know, put your name into that thing, and it'll tell you, you only did 30, you know, push-ups and things like that, next time, you know, do better, you know, that type of thing. So, and that could also work into the fitness center, where, you know, all the, the exercise machines can have these readers in there that, you know, actually monitors your exercise, and then has a data, and then, you know, makes a recommendation as to, you know, what your health condition might be. Next, please. Those are the RFID tags, okay. Energy efficiency, LED, which you all know is light emitting diode, and it, you know, ranges in all the visible colors, in UV and infrared, low energy consumption, has a longer lifetime than a conventional lighting system, and it's very, very bright. You have interior LED lights, exterior LED lights, and then, in the efficiency, I'm going to talk about energy efficient transformers as well. One LED lighting decreases, and that is, this is the street light, 41.59 kilowatt for 10 years service. And normally, the LED lights last 10 years and more. That means that's a 3.2 ton less CO2 emitted, and same effect as planting 651 trees. And so if you can imagine, when you replace all the street lights with LED lighting, you'll have a green city. These are some of the examples of the LED interior lighting. Office, restaurants, and some of the exterior lighting, you could, like I said, you know, the street lights you could replace, but also you could use LED as an art. Next, please. Those are some of the streetlight lamps. Next, please. This is a, you know, LED, kind of like art corridor that they created. Next. You know, this is a building facade. This is actually Las Vegas Fremont.
I recognize that.
You've probably seen that, yeah. That's all LED lights. Next. Some bridge, monuments, and that. So, and energy efficient transformers, there, the details of this, I think the experts will be interested in knowing how, you know, they really save energy by eliminating unbalanced harmonics and reactive power in the, the conventional transformers. And they can actually lengthen the lifespan of the transformer and save up to 10 to 15%. I think GWP might be very much interested in, in looking at this thing. Some of the future technology that I saw was a smart dust. This was actually in 1990, invented by a guy in UC Berkeley. And all the technologies that I'm showing you today is all US technology, but US has not really, you know, implemented these things, yet, you know, when I went to Korea, you know, all this technology, they were able to, you know, apply in their lives, and then also, you know, in the, in the industry. So some of the things are being developed in Korea, and that is that tiny wireless, micro electromechanical systems, MEMS sensors, and that's, they also call it MOS. And it's really the size of a grain of sand, that you can actually mix it with the building structure. So then, the building structure will tell you what temperature, if there's a fracture, so it'll talk to you. It'll give you all the data from the building structure, and you can do it on the, on the road, so that, you know, you talk about, you know, futures, you know, cars being guided by the, you know, automatic pilot, you can, you can do that with this type of, you know, invention of a smart dust. So there's a really lot of use with this smart dust here. And organic LEDs, there's organic lighting, you know, emitting diode, they're also called LEP and OEL. It's composed of film of organic compounds, and what that is, is that you have a scroll now. Instead of having the hard TV screen, you can roll up this in your pocket, and you can, you know, unscroll it and actually read newspaper from this, you know, screen. So it's a feature of the TV screens, computer screens. So, you know, you don't have this, you know, the screens that you're carrying anymore. This is actually scroll that you're going to be carrying. Organic solar cells, it's called plastic solar cells, and, you know, normally there are hard panels, the new generation, next, please, will look something like this. It's a thin film of a plastic, and the, you know, solar energy is generated from the, you know, panel like this. So these are the things that I saw, you know, if we can go back to maybe my USB and see if we can play that video.
It's on the desktop?
Yeah.
Just close that.
Andrew?
Yeah. You can run it off the desktop. Slow.
Okay, right there is a media poll, right at the top.
Right here.
No, right, right there, yes. Okay. A recommendation.
I'm sorry about the lights now.
No, no, no. High-technology features are doorstep, and they turn this UBCoRus, I don't know if you heard of the term, but it's omnipresent, it's a Latin word, it's everywhere, all the information is all linked together, it's everywhere. And it's through the networking and through the RFID tags. So I think Glendale should really, for a long-range plan, take a look at this, how other, you know, countries are, you know, planning their UCD planning, UBCoRus city planning, you know, working with all this RFID tags, networking, and so on, and maybe work it into Glendale, and create a high-tech zone in Glendale to attract high-tech companies, and research ways to retrofit existing infrastructure to adopt green technology and IT technology. So, you know, that's why I asked to speak today to maybe consider creating a long-range plan, and maybe some areas where we can invite these companies to come and start promoting these ideas.
Well, I see, I see, first of all, very impressive. Thank you for putting that together. I see several things from what you're saying there, and part of it is just the whole idea of, I'd call it, you're calling high-tech, I almost call it an entertainment zone or a vitality zone. Those, what we call in the polls?
Media polls.
Media polls. I mean, that's just fascinating stuff. And, you know, that would be very unique for Los Angeles, I'm sure it's not even been done anywhere in the country.
Not here.
You know, and it's, it's probably pretty doable, both in terms of technology and cost. Part of it also that I was interested in is what do we do as a community? And this is involving staff, and this is to extend out to the community, this is to kind of hear back from, of course, the council that kind of gives us all our marching orders, is we're hearing interests in phraseology and tech corridors, and what do we do with San Fernando? Clearly, there's, you know, an interest in creating an arts environment, which is, can be compatible to both of those, and how we do it. And I guess, so first off, I just want to ask staff, are any steps, you know, what are you doing right now? Are you waiting for council to come to you? Are you preparing some ideas for them? Where are we at in this, in this, in this, let's say, seizing the day type of point?
I'm sorry, are you asking in regards to the direction on the San Fernando Road corridor, or in the direction on sustainable technologies and sustainable standards?
You're right, that was kind of a broad question. But I think, I think for, just to narrow the question, is let's focus on the San Fernando corridor. And the reason I say that is that's a redevelopment area.
Right.
And part of my concern, when I was making notes here, is how do we take the limited resources and the limited time, same thing, of both council and staff and everyone else, and how do we actually create some movement? And if we rely on simple zoning and simple city processes, that's a very slow, very, I won't call it painful, but it's a very slow process. The outreach and all the other little things that go into it means it'll take a minimum of two years, certainly probably more likely three to five years, before any new environment could be created. And, and at that point, we lose so much opportunity. So season redevelopment zone area, obviously you cut through a lot of the red tape. It's already kind of predestined to do something exciting in there. So focusing on San Fernando for that reason, there are a variety of potential interests, some that'll be appropriate, some that won't, based on the traffic.
already available to actually hire people, and then actually ask for the grants to, in the areas of a green technology, and, you know, to step up, you know, technology investments.
Well, that would be something for the city council and the agency to consider. I must say, though, one of the areas that we confronted to our surprise when we were going through the San Fernando Road rezoning, was that there are many owners, property owners, along the corridor who have inherited their properties, and who managed to actually keep those properties occupied and rented without any additional investment. And there is very little incentive for them to try to move to a different direction. That was one of the things that we found, that they're profitable as they are, and what it would take for them to be excited enough to take another step of additional investments, or to make any changes, that would require a much more in-depth discussion.
This might be a very controversial question, but, you know, the Redevelopment Agency, do they have power of eminent domain to, you know, to create this, if you want to go in that direction?
Each project area is authorized to have eminent domain, and I can't recall if they have eminent domain in the San Fernando project area.
Well, related to that, whether it's eminent domain, eminent domain is, can be painful, expensive, slow-moving.
Right.
Okay. What sort of number of properties, acreage, what sort of properties currently within the city or the Redevelopment Agency's hands? Because obviously, those are areas that you can jump on quickly and react to.
It's not inconsiderable, actually, especially along--
I love those kind of statements. It's not--
I don't remember the exact square footage. I do remember that we actually measured that, and we presented that as part of our rezoning a number of years ago, but I don't remember it from the top of my head.
Question, how much is in, how much of that area is in the redevelopment area, or how much is actually controlled by the Redevelopment Agency?
Controlled by, well, either the city or by extension, the Redevelopment Agency. I mean, I know you got a lot of acreage, but--
Yeah, that's a lower number.
That's not, yeah, that is not considerable.
Because if you're talking--
[laughing]
Okay, let's put a few more. Because, I mean, again, I'm sitting here thinking, you know, I'm glad to hear the planning, and we're, I know we're starting to delve into areas that aren't really your domain. So, the kibitzing you're doing, we have to understand. You're not the director of the Redevelopment Agency, for example. But in terms of a catalyst, I mean, those are the properties that can trigger it, is, you know, big footprints already owned by the city, already controlled by the city, where you don't have to browbeat, you know, private owners and that type of thing. So that's why, you know, I'm kind of was curious, do we have, you know, that kind of acreage? Do we have a situation where you can woo somebody that wants to put in some sort of, you know, clean manufacturing process, or something along those lines? I mean, are some of the properties greater than five acres? Do you have anything like that size? I'm guessing not.
Not many. But there are large properties, and in the past, I just have, we are not the Redevelopment Agency staff, but we work with them, and in all fairness to them, I must just say this, that although the Redevelopment Agency does not control a lot of the property in the redevelopment areas, they, the staff make themselves available to create contacts between different parties who may be interested in negotiating. And then we are aware that several of those attempts have taken place, whether or not they amounted to, resulted to any transaction, you know, not much, but they do actively provide opportunities for different parties to meet and discuss opportunities.
And I have another question, not directly related to what Mr. Lee put together, but, and, you know, maybe it's mean-spirited, but when I know that Glendale's created this great, flexible San Fernando corridor zoning situation, I really question why we would potentially increase our competitors' opportunities by sharing with them our secrets and our process. I mean, Los Angeles is across the railroad tracks, and they touch us. And, you know, to me, it's like, hey, that's a trade secret, fellas. You know, hands off our ideas. I mean, I understand there has to be a certain amount of cooperation, but not when it comes to making money, and not, you know, and helping us have, you know, the revenue for police officers and fill in the foxholes, they said potholes.
Well, this is something that we encounter also, as now planning and architecture and urban designer are coming close, that's the difference in philosophy that's also appearing in that field. The planning profession, traditionally, is one that you share ideas, you make your ideas public, and any idea that can be duplicated in other jurisdictions and by other public, especially public agencies, is the idea that's celebrated. And that's what we get awards for, because our ideas get copied.
Yeah, but, you know, awards don't buy fire trucks, you know, so, and I appreciate where you're coming from, because obviously, part of government is to serve the greater good. But, you know, I guess that maybe it's my business background, I'm, my greater good basically goes from somewhere around Los Feliz up to, you know, Foothill Boulevard. So, I appreciate what you need to do, but by the same token, you know, jeez, we need to keep some of our secrets to ourselves. Based on the presentation that you've seen, Hassan, and some of the things that Mr. Lee was so kind to bring up and kind of get us thinking, is there anything within the domain of the planning department that, you know, maybe there's something else to continue working on?
Well, based on the presentation that we thought, I guess the most obvious piece of the presentation that is something that we have been ourselves and staff aware of is the role of electronics in, and lighting, new lighting technologies and signage. Our most municipal codes really do not make a lot of room for new technologies to be incorporated into the signage, and many communities have some difficulty dealing with that and absorbing these. So, but we have been aware, and we've been discussing among staff for some time, if there is a role to be played, given all the new technologies that are available, and signage that is becoming pretty normal in many other places. And if so, where in Glendale that would be plausible, and if not everywhere?
Yes, some of it, you know, relies on foot traffic, some of it relies on auto traffic, yeah. So, okay. Do you have any specific questions, or anything else you want to add to what you presented?
No, what I saw was that, when I was, when I was there, you know, I saw, I mean, I just, you know, all this frozen lamps, office lighting, was actually converted over to LED lighting.
They've all gone LED.
Yeah, and then, you know, it looks as bright as, I mean, you know, it's so bright that you can, you know, control how many, you know, fixtures you can put in there to control the lighting. And, you know, this type of things, you know, probably saw in the presentation, that, you know, if, by changing one, you know, light fixture to one LED lighting, you know, you can really move into the green, green energy. And, you know, these days, you know, saving electricity, saving, you know, fossil fuels, I mean, these are the things that we're focusing, and also the Obama administration is really focusing on, and giving incentives and giving programs to do that. So, you know, I think Glendale should be in position to really take advantage of that, and really move into that area. I know I love the area that I live in, and it's this nice cozy area and that, but we're still, you know, I mean, you know, if you love the horses, then you can ride horses, but you still need to somehow learn to drive, drive the cars. Same thing, I mean, we need to move into the new age, and these are the things that I saw. And those media poles are not that expensive. I was surprised that those 40-foot tall media poles are only about $50,000. You know, so, I mean, you know, it's not, it's not that expensive. You know, you think that, you know, costs a lot of money, but so if we put about 10 of those things, and all of a sudden, it becomes a landmark, becomes a, you know, you make the statement.
I think we have the planning commission should chip in, buy one, and then we can just sell advertising on it. Oh, that was great. Very informative. I'm really glad you put that together.
Well, my pleasure. Thank you.
Anything else to add from that, or shall we move on to the next agenda item? All right.
Thank you very much.
Well, actually, we're nearing the end. We've had the planning department updates. Comments from commissioners? Mr. Berman, anything to add? All right. Mr. Lee?
I moved to turn.
Well, not, I have one comment. I'm eager for you to do that, believe me. We're going to have the solar thing coming in front of us, and I'm very interested in that, because the role of, especially like PV, photovoltaics, and how it's becoming mandated in a lot of cities, Culver City has mandates, is that something that's kind of, that we're going to start, is that part of what planning commission, or planning commission, planning staff plans to suggest, is that it start becoming a required component of, let's say, commercial development?
I'm afraid that-- I'm afraid that the topic of the discussion will not be that exciting and sexy. It'll be mostly about whether or not zoning standards, to what extent zoning standards apply to the structures that are used to--
Oh, to just create the--
Right.
Well, how about, why not a broader view of that, then? In terms of the mandating, is that something that would be driven more through public works, or would it be driven through planning?
Well, it could be driven from any department, and if that's the desire of the commission to send a message or make a set of recommendations to the city council to look at a broader version of that topic, that would be certainly something that you could direct us to do at, during or at the end of that discussion, and we will be happy to forward any such messages to the city council for you.
Well, and part of it goes to just what you're talking about, the review of structures, but I just know from, you know, what I'm facing on a daily basis, a lot of communities are requiring it, you know, a certain component. It's unused rooftop, it's, you know, a lot of it you would have to kind of think in terms of maybe design review. But I think I'd be eager to have a survey of what Pasadena, Burbank, Culver City, what some of the, you know, the, you know, the companies, or companies, the cities that owe you something, since you've helped so many out, and just kind of what they're doing and the path they're taking. Because, again, it's one thing, you know, it's okay to be a leader, I like being a leader, but the one thing we don't want to do is be left behind. So, the sooner we kind of know what's happening out there, I would be interested in just knowing.
So that would be in terms of requiring solar energy or other types of sustainable resources incorporated into new standards and be required?
Right. And some of it boils over into some of the things we've had sidebar conversations in, the role of lead, and, you know, some of the other things involving water, electrical, and so on. But just to, you know, kind of keep an eye out on what the other communities are doing.
We'll be happy to do that.
All right. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you.